Good evening, everyone. I hereby call to order the May 2017 meeting of the Village of Tivoli Board of Trustees. Thank you very much for being here. Will you please rise for our Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which wishes stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We had agendas as you came in. I want to let everyone know that we added, are there two items? Do we have three items on the printed agenda? Yes, so in addition, we have an agenda item to authorize Village Engineer Crawford and Associates to conduct the annual landfill monitoring. And we have another authorization issuance of a road opening permit to Central Hudson to relocate an Amtrak structure which had trespassed on village land. So I'm sorry those are not on the printed agendas. Those things just came together very late in the afternoon. And this is one of those times we use our asterisk. Their agenda is subject to change, so. We will begin with a village clerk's report. Clerk Bruno, please.
Yes, in the clerk's office, there were 380 trash tags sold. Two payrolls were processed. And the deputy clerk attended one zoning board of appeals meeting. And upcoming will be Monday, May 29th. Their clerk's office will be closed in observance of Memorial Day.
And I know that that morning, I believe it's 10:00 a.m., there will be a memorial service with the American Legion up at the Red Church. Yeah, so look for that. Thank you, Clerk Bruno. Trustees, we have two sets of minutes in your binders. We have the regular board meeting minutes from April 19th, which was also our annual reorganizational meeting. And we have workshop minutes from April 26th. You've had a chance to review these. Is there a motion to accept both sets of minutes? Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, minutes are approved. Moving on to the treasurer's report. All right, this month out of the general fund, we spent $33,848.20. Out of the water fund, $4,958.43. Out of the sewer fund, $2,252.81. For a grand total of $41,059.44. I want to thank Treasurer Day for the report and ask if there is a motion to accept the report.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the treasurer's report is accepted. Is there a motion to pay the bills?
So moved.
That was moved by trustee Schneider and seconded by Deputy Mayor. Any discussion? This is our last month in the fiscal year. The new fiscal year begins June 1st. And we'll talk a little bit more about the budget later in this meeting. So all in favor of paying the bills?
Aye.
Aye. Moving on to a zoning report, which has a new format. Trustee Izraedi.
Yes, this is from our new CEO, John Fenton. He writes that two building permits were reviewed and issued. Four municipal searches were done. This is when properties change. Very often, a search has to be done as part of the title search. In addition to that, he issued zoning violations for high grass. He issued five notices for that. Rubbish and trash, three notices. Peeling and flaking and chipping paint, four notices. And he noted, he violated an abandoned house. I believe that's on North Road, which had not responded since they had, were supposed to get a demolition permit some time ago. We've been working on that one for about three years, I think. So we're pleased at this first report. It's much more legible and understandable. And he certainly has been busy on his first week on the job.
Yeah, I have to say, we're very pleased with Mr. Fenton thus far. His many years of experience doing this in other communities is evident. And he's gone right to work. He's done two rounds of notices already. And I've seen some people who get these letters, they're already dealing with whatever he asked them to deal with. And, you know, the letters are pretty intense looking if you should get one. There's a lot of red ink in there, sort of showing some teeth. But it's really just about letting you notice that, putting you on notice that you have a violation. Just take care of it, and it's not a problem. But we are going to enforce property maintenance in the village. And after a long time, we're all really happy that we have a code enforcement officer who seems ready to do the job, so. And if residents have complaints, you know, send them in to him. You can find his contact on the village website, on the directory. And we look forward to having him here in the village and on the Tivoli team.
What nights is he here?
Yes, so he has office hours just in the office next door behind us. Wednesday, 4:30 to 6:30, and Friday, 4:00 to 6:00. And he also, you know, you can call him or send him an email. And, you know, he might be able to make other arrangements or correspond with you over the phone or whatnot, so. Take advantage of him if you've got a building project or something like that. Moving on to public comment on agenda items. So we have a lot of budget modifications as we're into the final month of the fiscal year, as we're moving monies between lines to keep everything balanced. We also need to renew the annual parking lot lease for Monumental Lodge over here, where we pay the masons to have their lot serve also as municipal parking. We will authorize the treasurer to issue the 1718 tax warrant. And then, as I mentioned earlier, two authorizations. One, to conduct the required annual landfill monitoring. And the second, to authorize an issuance of the road opening so Central Hudson can cut Diana Street and move some electrical infrastructure. So any public comments on the agenda items? Seeing none, we'll dive right in. Trustees, we'll begin with the budget modifications. We went through these in the workshop. Having recouped money that was spent on the water and wastewater evaluation that was under grant, we finally got our money back from Dutchess County. We're able to repay contingencies. So almost all of these modifications, we're using money from the contingency fund to address lines that went over. And also, we have incurred more costs related to two other grants. The Department of State grant for designing a stable shoreline down here. We had about $3,000 in engineering costs there. And $7,000 that is associated with the Greenway, design of a walkway down Broadway. So while we're laying out $10,624.01, all of that money will eventually be recaptured by grants. And lastly, a few months ago, Court Clerk Revelus, one, applied for and won a grant in the amount of $3,100. And so we're doing a modification to represent that revenue in the budget and put it in places where she can spend it. I believe there's going to be some new shelves in here, a new rug. And it'll also offset the cost of redoing these walls, which we did a couple of months ago. So trustees, we've looked at these budget modifications. Is there a motion to adopt these budget mods?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
The really exciting thing is that each of these represents having actually gotten some things done that needed to be done.
That is nice, yes.
It's nice to know we had many to look for.
Moving on to our second resolution. Resolution authorizing the execution of an agreement between the Village of Tivoli and Monumental Lodge 374 of the Free and Accepted Masons for the lease of certain real property for a parking area. And also in here, we do get to push a lot of our snow back there when we have too much. This is something we've been doing for a number of years. The rent this year is, did we confirm that number? Is it 1350? 1350. All right. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution?
So moved.
That was trustee Schneider. Is there a second?
Second.
That was trustee Izraedi. Do a roll call vote. Deputy Mayor Major?
Aye.
Trustee Izraedi?
Aye.
Trustee Schneider?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. And we want to thank the masons for this collaboration now once again. And I think we've done just a little better this year, keeping it clear of snow as we were supposed to. Because sometimes they say, it's in your contract, you gotta get over there and clean this up. We've towed a few cars out of there, too. So if you park over there, do read the sign and follow the rules there. Number three, 2017-2018 tax warrant. And Clerk Bruno, we're doing a motion on this? It's just a motion, right?
It is just a motion, yeah.
All right, so this is to authorize Bonnie Day, Village Treasurer, to receive and collect from the several persons named in the tax roll here to annexed the several sums stated in the last column here of opposite their respective names, being a total of $448,799.83 in taxes and $2,018.17 in liens. That's for the fiscal budget. That's a total of $450,818. Is there a motion to authorize this tax warrant? That was the deputy mayor with excitement. Is there a second?
Second.
Trustee Schneider, any discussion? When do the village tax bills go out?
May 20th.
May 20th, very good. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And that is no increase over the past year.
And that is no increase. We did not raise taxes this year. Thank you for reminding me to say that, because we did deliberate about it. And we're very pleased, that we feel we can continue to operate, provide the services.
Now, did we stay under the tax cap? We actually held it constant.
All right. Regular business number four, authorizing Crawford and Associates to conduct the annual landfill monitoring. Is that on Freeborn Lane? I think so. So we're on Freeborn Lane. I guess the history of these is when various landfills were closed, the state told the nearest municipality, that's your landfill. And you have to, even though it's no longer receiving trash and garbage, you know, they get capped, and they have vents, and they need to be monitored to make sure that there's no environmental problem happening there. So even though we're no longer putting things in that landfill, it does have to be monitored. And we used to have to monitor it originally four times a year, which was expensive. And then for a number of years, it was twice a year. And after many years in a row of no incident, you can ask the DEC if you can go down to once a year, which saves less money. We were able to do that last year. So we're now down to monitoring it once a year. And we've got an estimate here from Crawford we need to authorize. The projected total for 2017 is $5,500. That's what it costs us to monitor that landfill.
And that landfill is just off Flasher Road on Freeborn Lane at all? I'm curious.
And it is mentioned, projected total. It may come in a little lower if things happen more quickly out there. But that's the, not to exceed number, 5,500. Is there a motion to authorize Crawford and Associates to conduct the landfill monitoring?
So moved.
That was trustee Izraedi. Is there a second?
Second.
That was Deputy Mayor Major. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And lastly, a motion to authorize issuance of a road opening permit to Central Hudson. If you go down to the village parcel down there, you will see sort of toward the north end of the east side of the tracks, about a 10-foot electrical panel. Well, that showed up one day, installed by Amtrak, somewhat working with the Department of Transportation. I don't know which, they may have had a subcontractor. Someone didn't have the map that day. And they built this thing in the middle of our property. So after many, many months of work with the engineer, with Amtrak, basically everyone was amenable and this mistake happened. But it does take a long time to get it to be moved. So there's a new proposed location, which is south of the village lands, to the left, if you're on Diana Street looking west, on Amtrak property. They have an existing utility box down there. It's that big sort of gray one on the right when you come down Diana Street. But in order to wire that up, they have to cut across Diana Street. So we're going to let them do that, so that they can move this thing off our property. So it's the least we can do, right? And they have to, they have to give us, like any other digging permit, a road cut, you have to pay $300. And 100 of that is a non-refundable administrative fee. And then after the village thinks that everything's hunky-dory, you get your $200 back, so. With that, is there a motion to authorize the issuance of a road opening permit to Central Hudson?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Oh, that's a tough one. That was Schneider Izraedi. Please, some buzzers.
I was going to say, rock paper scissors.
We'll do rock, paper, scissors.
Any discussion? I just want to thank Crawford and Associates and Village Attorney Christine Schall. It's taken a lot of work to get this far and get that structure off our property. So thank you to them.
But the good news is that more people at Amtrak know that we own the land now than used to.
They've also pinned the parcel. It's much more clear now, so that this doesn't happen again. All right, well, we're going to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we'll wait for that. Clerk's return with that. Let's see, what's next? All right, the next board meeting will be held Wednesday, June 21st, 2017, at 7:00 p.m., preceded by a workshop at 6:00 p.m. here at the historic Watts de Paister Hall. And we have a regular workshop on June 14th at 7:00 p.m. in the mayor's office. All these meetings are open to the public. We will move on to committee reports. Trustee Izraedi, please.
Okay, I actually have a few things to say, but I'm going to start with the water report. And I am wanting to know that I've spoken to Jimmy Simmons, and he will be adding up the amount of grain on the report again. So we will be able to have our usual conversation about that. The Ballot Well was not used at all in the month of April. The McKnight Number One well was pumping at about 10,000 gallons per day. And pumped a total of 300,000 gallons. The 2Pw and the 5PE combined pumped about 10,000 a day for most of the month. But they were offsetting. The Ford PE and 10PE wells pumped about 15,000 to 16,000 gallons a month. And the Woodmarks well, our largest producer, pumped about 25,000 to 26,000 gallons a month. So its total gallons was about 785,000. The other wells combined were about equal to that amount. We had one, a water main break just down in front of Ralph's on 9G. That was on the 15th of April. And the water mains were flushed on the 25th and the 27th. Now, anybody want to know, have an idea how much water we got in the month of April? 5.83 inches. 3.6. Although there was snow, you may not have remembered that on the 1st of April. So that might have upped it a little bit. Okay. And the Water Systems Report shows that the water was of good quality, and it was tested at two different locations.
Before you leave the water report, recalling that water main break on 9G, you know, the superintendent was on his well-deserved vacation. And I want to commend Cody Thayer and Ralph Torcia for handling that. You know, when you get a water main break on Faroe Avenue or Spring Street, it's very different than when you have one up on 9G. I want to thank the Tivoli Fire Department for helping us out there, keeping everybody safe. And also Dutchess County Public Works, who I was in touch with. I mean, this is, we made a cut on the shoulder of the state road. And I hadn't been in that situation as mayor before. And they were, they put me in touch with the right people in New York State. So I just want to mention that it took several levels of government to handle that. And it went very smoothly. And it's been patched, it's all closed up now. So that was, that was about five minutes before the egg hunt started. Yeah, so it was a pretty wild Saturday.
No pressure.
Yeah, day before Easter. Thank you, Susan.
The zoning board met, the Certain Board of Appeals met about a property on Clay Hill, where the property owner is trying to determine where a place is drawing, and it may need a variance. And the planning board, I believe, met this last month. I do have a couple of additional things. One is, Tivoli, the Acoustic Medicine Show again received a $500 grant for Tivoli's street painting festival. And we will send these certificates of, well, I'm giving these certificates of recognition. One from Sue Serino, and one from Kevin Cahill to the mayor for special safekeeping. And just a comment, the Arts Fitz Hudson is a wonderful resource for these kinds of things. They're very easy to work with. They've expanded what they're trying to do. And as we've entered a political season where funding these kinds of things seems less likely, keep them in mind, because they've done a really wonderful job. And that event is great fun for about 500 people, one day in September. And then I had one other thing. The village board worked on updating the LoSeP programs, asset allocation. It's now going to be 60/40 stocks and bonds. But I do have an interesting record of the returns that have been received on the program when it was predominantly bonds. And over the period of 10 years that the program's been in effect, it's actually earned 5.5% annually. Interestingly, I just looked at this information. The first year that it was in place was 2009, '08, '09. And if any of you remember that period, that's when Lehman Brothers went under. And so, well, we didn't get invested. So we got, we got invested when the bond market went high. And then we got into our equities when the equity market recovered. So that one year, they earned 22.2%. So that contributed greatly to that annualized rate of 5.5%. So it's just a nice little tidbit for those of you who are in that fund. I mean, it now has about 125,000 in it. We talked about 135,000 not too long ago. But we distributed some of that money to the fellow whose service station is in front of where the water main break was. Because Ralph Reesey reached 65, so.
Yeah, 66.
Thank you, trustee Izraedi. Trustee Schneider, please.
Okay, so the Tivoli Village Court Charge Volume Summary Report, say that five times fast, for the month of April, April 1st through April 30th, charges received total four, charges disposed total 22. And the total money collected and remitted to the state comptroller is $1,020. Also want to give everyone the reminder that street parking along Montgomery has been suspended during construction of the bridge. You'll notice a Great Big News sign as you are coming into the village from 9G that monitors your speed. That is courtesy of Dutchess County. We want to thank them for helping us to create a safer environment there during this period of transition. Also, we moved the solar-powered sign that we had previously acquired and was placed on the, there you go. I was going to say, it was placed just before the bridge as you were coming into the village from Broadway there. That has been moved to monitor your speed as you are heading out Montgomery to 9G. Just be aware that there's going to be increased traffic along that route. Please be mindful when you're driving through there, because a lot of our residents do live along Montgomery Street. And we want to make sure that our awareness is there for their safety.
And we would like to thank those residents for their patience during this process, because I know it's not a lot of fun to have all that traffic coming through, but.
Or to not be able to necessarily park where you might usually park. However, you know, there's been a lot of talk about when there's one-side parking, obviously, it slows traffic. That is true. But given the increased volume, and that there's just basically steady two-way traffic, we saw a need to prevent any parking at all. And at first glance, that may seem imprudent, and you're actually sort of making things less safe. But think about when your house is on fire, and you want that fire truck to get down the road and out of town, or to a car accident. So the trade-off in potentially faster speeding, which we've addressed with, we've had increased police, and we've had the speed signs, and we will stay on top of that speeding as absolutely best we can. We know it's a real concern. We share that concern. However, having, since the no parking has been in effect, and a couple of times when one car is parked, you see what happens. What happens is it's a traffic jam. You've got four or five cars lined up in both directions, trying to pick their way around a car in a little one-lane pinch point. And that is absolutely unsafe when you've got to think about emergency responders. So that's why we did it. I feel very strongly it was the right choice. And that's going to be the situation until the bridge is complete. So yes, again, thanks for the patience and understanding of residents in that area. But, and do respect that no parking. We have already ticketed cars, and we have already towed cars who have felt like it doesn't apply to them. So we're very serious about it. And it's for everyone's safety.
So that being.
The other thing is that bridge, we've been waiting for about 20 years. So that was another consideration, is we want, we want that bridge.
I guess one of the guys working on that bridge may have commented that he was surprised that the bridge is still standing.
Has collapsed already, yeah.
It's still, it should have been done, they said, about eight years ago.
Well, it's getting done now, and we're grateful, so.
So that being said, that's just my reminder for everyone. You know, please don't compromise the safety of our residents there. Be aware and pay attention to how fast you're going.
Okay, thank you, trustee Schneider. Trustee Murphy couldn't be with us tonight. He's not feeling well, and we wish him a speedy recovery. It's a terrible time of year to be under the weather. But I did just reconfirm with my notes, and Memorial Day, 10:00 a.m., a ceremony with the American Legion. I'll be speaking up there. 10:00 a.m. at the Little Red Church up on 9G. So everyone's invited. Help us remember the fallen. Deputy Mayor Major, please.
Okay, lots of things going on, as always. In terms of historic resources, there's an event at the Elmendorf this Sunday at 3:00 p.m., which is a partnership between Historic Red Hook and Dutchess County Historical Society. And it's called, it's part of a series called Decoding the Past. And the title of this particular event is Leading a Wholesome and Healthy Life in Red Hook: Tools of the Trade Across Two Centuries. And so what it is, is several items have been selected. And we're going to be talking about how you, how you go about, you know, sort of decoding these items, you know. So it's sort of an 18th, 19th, and 20th century Nancy Drew.
It's like an archaeological mystery.
It's sort of a, what is this thing, you know, that I've found? And how do you go about determining what it is?
Using it, yeah. So that'll be a lot of fun, Sunday at 3:00. Next Saturday, no, I'm sorry, Saturday, June 10th, 10:00 to 3:00 is the Second Annual House and Barn Preservation Expo, also at the Elmendorf. And it's an information fair on ways to preserve, restore, and reuse your old house or barns And it's an information fair on ways to preserve, restore, and reuse your old house or barns or outbuildings. And there's demonstrations and presentations and you can, sort of, it's sort of an Antiques Roadshow format where you bring your questions and your photos and we have people there who will help you out, answer your questions, point you in the right direction. And the thing that I'm most excited about in terms of historic events, no, that's not true. Anyway, this is very exciting. Saturday, June 17th, 10 to noon, there's an event at Clermont called Woman on a Wheel Ride Along with History. And this is to celebrate the centennial of women's suffrage in New York State. So there's going to be a guest historian who will talk about the impact of the bicycle on women's social status before getting the vote. And then there'll be a bike ride along the trails at Clermont, ending with some lemonade and other delicious things to eat. It's a $5 charge and bring your bicycle, kids under 12 are free.
Are we gonna have anybody dressed in period garb right in their bikes? That'd be really awesome.
Doing the talk is going to be in period garb and she has a reproduction 1890 bicycle.
Wow, okay. And New York State's pretty important with that because Susan B. Anthony was important, right?
Absolutely, very important. Come on up and celebrate that. The library is hopping, as always. This Saturday is the plant swap, 11 to 12, so bring your plants before 11:00. And the swapping starts at 11 o'clock. Also, the library has the, has, I guess they have passes to Olana, which is the Frederick Church House up by the Red Van Winkle Bridge, built in 1872. And if you've not been, it is incredible. It is this sort of Middle Eastern-inspired Victorian, crazy place. So it was designed by Frederick Church, who was one of the, one of the heavy hitters of the Hudson River School of Painting, and also by Calvert-Vox, who designed Central, who was actually designing Central Park at the same time he was working on this. And so the library has passes and you, which gets you, most of the tours are free, but it also gets you a discount at the gift shop. So you can stop in at the library, the circulation desk, pick up a pass, go online, make a reservation, and you can keep the pass for four days. And you can get more information about that either by going out to the library or at olana.org. As always, Tuesdays are storytime, Thursdays are hooks and needles, yarns and thread. And Friday now is going to be chess club in the afternoon for the summer. And finally, with the environment, spring turkey season runs through May 31st. So you're in the bay, be a little careful. The canoe launch off of Kid Lane is closed for renovations until further notice. So that makes access not impossible, but not easy.
Do you know how long that's anticipated?
I do not. Keep you posted. And the ticks are crazy.
How was your river sweep?
The river sweep was fantastic, thank you to everyone who showed up and thank you to Welsh Sanitation for donating a dumpster, which we probably got two-thirds of the way filled. We probably picked up 50 bags of garbage, mostly styrofoam, just nasty stuff. We also got some really big pipes, like, that required several people to carry.
Wow.
Yeah, but it was great, we had about 20 people who showed up.
Where did they come from?
They were just down the river. And they may have been.
The pipes or the people?
Yeah.
Oh, the people, I know, the pipes, pipes and all the garbage, I've never seen it laying down there.
Yeah, well, but to get, you know, 20 people in the rain.
It's pretty fantastic, Charlie.
Pretty fantastic, yeah. And I think a lot of the stuff, you know, it comes in on the tide.
It comes in, yeah.
Can I throw it back to you to talk about Tivoli Rec?
Sure, I'm gonna give a really brief. Trustee Murphy has been working really hard at bringing back a Tivoli Rec program. So there will be a Tivoli Rec program available this summer. Please be on the lookout for additional details, we should have those out to you by the beginning of June.
Yeah, hopefully the details will come out in the water bill June 1st and in the newsletter.
You've got it.
And do we have an age, age range for the kids?
We, you know, that's going to be part of the details, but what I will say is that we are looking at extending the typical age range so we can capture more of the really fantastic kids that we have here in Tivoli. So please keep that in mind when you're making your plans for this summer.
Yeah, it's mostly a save the date announcement. You know, since we won't be back in front of this camera and in front of this room for this meeting for a month, we wanted to let, you know, families know that there is going to be a Tivoli Recreation Camp for the, for the kids this summer. We took last year off to regroup, restructure, and so don't make other plans.
Don't make other plans, but here's the other thing I'm gonna say. The water bill won't be the only place that you'll be able to access details. We do plan to have details that'll be posted to the website.
Yeah, we'll do the blast to the village email list as well.
Yeah, you've got it, so, there you go.
Thank you, trustee Schneider.
My pleasure.
Well, I'm gonna save the big thing for last. So just a couple of nice announcements, we're gonna be doing some landscaping next week in front of this building and also at the four corners, trying to sort of clean things up for the spring and do a little beautification, get ready for a nice summer. We've had some nice collaboration with the Tivoli Merchants and Artists Association, sort of lining out, you know, what do we need to do to spruce Tivoli up, make it open for business, particularly with the bridge closure and the detour, trying to make sure that Tivoli still has a robust summer of visitors and economically for all our restaurants and shops and cultural venues. So there'll be some landscaping. Also, we have a number of new trash and recycling baskets. You know, we've got about five beat-up ones left downtown on Broadway and we are gonna come back and be putting up a new set, including a recycling option at a number of locations. So that'll be happening as well. Of course, as Tivoli does more business and it's a more lively place, it also produces more trash. So we need a place to put that. But these are some of the fun things we're working on with Tivoli Merchants and Artists and the village board trustees. I will also mention, there is one plot left in the community garden, so come get your plot. It's $30, gets you for a season. I've already planted a few things in mine and the rain was good, we'll see what the heat does. But one plot left, let's have a full house there. And we also just put up a really nice new sign at the community garden.
Yes, nice.
Yeah, it's been, it's been, this is our fifth season since we started the garden and we completed the raised beds, that's been a three-year project of using the fees to make raised beds for everybody. So it's coming along, it's a good time, and there's one left. Also, in the June water bill, you will receive the annual water quality report. This is a several-page document that tells you about where your water comes from and its quality. It'll also be posted on the website and it's available already, right, Clerk Bruno? We have the report?
We do have it, it's on the website and it'll be posted in a few areas throughout the village.
Okay, so you can come find it here, see it on the website, or it'll be coming in your water bill on June 1st as well. And, you know, we talked about this a little bit earlier. Obviously, the bridge is being rebuilt, that's a great thing. There's a detour on Montgomery Street, that's less great, especially for people who live there. But, you know, we have to have that no parking rule in effect, it's going to be enforced. I want to say that Dutchess County has been tremendously collaborative and supportive of how this is affecting the village. I've spoken almost every other day, even with, either with the commissioner of Public Works, Robert Ballkind, or the county executive, and they have given us added police patrols so that we're not paying for that, which is tremendously helpful, brought in the big speed sign. And I have no doubt that as the summer progresses, they will continue to support us. There's no other way to get that bridge built. And as Tom pointed out, we've needed that bridge for a long time, it was 89 years old.
So if you have a friend on Montgomery Street, just tell him you, they have your sympathy and we're very grateful for their patience. It's gonna be good for all of us. We really thank you.
Well, we're all in together, right?
We're all in together and, you know, it's not as, you know, knock on wood, it's not as bad as I had thought it would be. There's a few people, you know, rush hour is, rush hour in Tivoli seems to be about 20 minutes, so.
When you're out driving, one of the best ways to control speeding is drive slowly yourself.
You know, it's surprising, I live, you know, just beyond the bridge and I was just on my yard reception and probably 15 or 20 cars come up and they see, but they don't get it, the sign at the end's a little.
Of course not.
They're kidding, they say, well, local, it's just local, it doesn't go anywhere. So they don't get that, they can't get through from there, and so then they go.
It does test reading comprehension, yes. We've had a lot of folks going up the dead-end road with a big dead-end sign and they go like, that's like, dead-end actually means dead-end.
If you read the slogan of the sign, you know that too. It's just a part of the, they don't know how to read.
It's not a normal situation and, you know, we will all get through it together. Okay, here's the big news, tomorrow night is finally here, 7:00 PM, third floor. Water report, wastewater report, here, I'll put them this way to see how thick these are. So some background, three years ago, almost to the day, on May 21st, 2014, right here, under my predecessor Brian Cranna, the village of Tivoli applied to Dutchess County for an $80,000 grant with the Dutchess County Water and Wastewater Authority to study the condition of the water and wastewater systems in Tivoli and to create a transfer feasibility report, should the village choose to transfer the systems to the DCWWA, Dutchess County Water and Wastewater Authority. So we applied for that grant three years ago and we won that grant. And I think we shall thank Mayor Cranna for getting this ball rolling, bless you. The study took about 18 months and produced these 500 pages. These have been available since May 1st. We've got hard copies here at the clerk's office, you can come in and read. There are also hard copies at the library, if you prefer to read in the comfort and charm of our library, you can read them down there. They're also available on the village website. You go to the homepage, you go to government, you scroll down to document center. Go into the document center, the three reports are there. Now, I've been holding these two. The third report, which is the transfer feasibility report, is a slender, maybe 13-page document. I haven't brought it in the room here today. So those reports are out there, they contain all the news. Tomorrow night at 7:00, upstairs in this building, we will have a presentation, which will be an explanation and explication of these documents. So if you've looked at them or perused them, skimmed them, come up tomorrow night. We will have Erin Moore of Tie &amp; Bond, the engineering firm who conducted these evaluations. Erin Moore will be present, she will be having something of a slideshow to show you sort of the key findings of these reports. Also present will be DCWWA Director Bridget Barclay, and she will be here to talk about that dimension of this whole study. The Dutchess County Water and Wastewater Authority is a public benefit corporation. They were established by the Dutchess County Legislature in 1991. In order to do that, they have to ask New York State to authorize the creation of this authority, that was done. The legislature did that in the early 90s because they looked out at the several hundred water and sewer systems throughout the county and said, oh my gosh, these are all gonna start failing in the next 10, 20, 30 years. For a number of reasons, people aren't able to keep up with them, aren't able to take care of them. I think we can all understand, if we've watched state or national news, failing infrastructure is a national concern, it's a national reality. Deferred maintenance is rampant, whether it be water and sewer or our bridges, highways, airports. The whole country's going through this, Tivoli's going through this as well. I don't need to tell any of you that our systems are old and they have problems often. And another dimension of this, which maybe Tom Christie would like to speak to, is it's not just about our drinking water. That water tower holds all the water that we're gonna need if we have a serious fire in this village. And in addition to, you know, this water tank's purpose is to hold, you know, clean drinking water for your family and to protect your life and property if there's a fire. And frankly, it's not up to either task at this time. You know, it was built in 1938.
So the report is, is talking about two different issues. One is what has to happen to this water and sewer system in the next, in the immediate future, in the five-year, 10-year, and 20-year future, and it lays it out that way. And then who should do it? Is the second issue. Should we use this as a, sort of a map? Map for what our three guys and directed by the mayor do? Or should we make the decision to essentially turn this system over to an independent administrator? Who would do those things? One of the things I find is that the cost is identical or very close to identical, whichever way you do it. And it's just wonderful to know what needs to be done and sort of the order in which it needs to be done.
Yeah, when you delve into these evaluations, they went in every manhole, they looked at the water tower, they looked at the water mains, they looked at all the hydrants, on the treatment plant. They looked at the sewer mains, they sent cameras to the sewer mains, they looked at our treatment plant. So, I mean, they looked at every nut and screw in this, and both of these systems saw the condition they were in. Many of the conditions were not great. They also assigned a price tag to every component. So we know, it's like you took your car to the shop and they said, here's what's wrong and this is what it's gonna cost. That's what we've got here now, Tivoli has never had that before. And that's been the value of this $80,000 study. So tomorrow night, 7:00, come and we are all together gonna dive into these reports and get the facts about the condition of our water and sewer system. That, that's the first part of the conversation. There will be subsequent meetings because then, as Susan pointed out, we need to talk about, do we want to tackle this ourselves? Do we want to transfer to the Water and Wastewater Authority? And that is another decision further down. The important thing right now is to get the facts about what we're looking at, what your quarterly water and sewer bills will be as these repairs start happening. And as Susan said, this does include a prioritization, what should have, you know, what needs to happen today, what we can do in the first five years, the six to 11 years, and up to 20 years. So I, I think for the village of Tivoli, this is one of the biggest things that has come along in a long time. I want everyone to know about it, I don't want anyone to think that this board is doing anything without all your input and all your awareness. We certainly do not want this responsibility ourselves, we share the same water and sewer as you all. So please come to the meeting tomorrow night, it will be recorded by a PANDA. If you can't make it, you can watch the tape afterwards, it'll be available. And there will be additional meetings, this is gonna be a long, slow conversation. Deliberate process, yes. So that's the news, 7:00 PM tomorrow. And with that, any public comment?
No.
Mr. Christie?
Just wanna touch back on traffic on Montgomery Street. Think we gotta get the word out to residents, bar kids, whoever, not to walk the street. Use sidewalks. I mean, I've seen, seen the kids go down there, arrive, come back late at night on Kid Lane and make the turn and there's somebody walking in the middle of the road, there's no lights there, somebody could want to get hit, especially down with this traffic going both directions. You may wanna contact bars so that they can tell the students to try using the, try using sidewalks and stuff. I mean, I mentioned it to the police officer, you got a night that says if they're jaywalking, you should get, they should take it. That's the only way they're gonna learn anyway. But I don't want to see anybody get hit by a car.
Well, I think just as fair as asking our drivers to be careful and mindful of their speed, we also have to ask our pedestrians to exercise some common sense to prevent any injuries there.
And morning time is rush hour time. And I see one this morning, straight out of the village, it happens. The other thing is, I don't know if you guys are aware, we received a piece of equipment, fire department, Board College donated a trailer. A red trailer, that's what I think.
Box trailer?
Yeah, what that'll be used for is for the six-wheeler, it'll be. Yep. What that'll be used for is for the six-wheeler will be inside that thing so that it speeds up response time. Instead of us having to take a load into a trailer and tie it down, it'll be ready to go. It also has a dual purpose. It's gonna also be used for, if there's a fire, it'd be like a rehab center. It has air conditioning, it has lights. It's gonna have a generator. It's gonna have some other stuff in it. So firefighters feeling from the heat or whatever will be able to go in there. They're also gonna be using it at board commencement, this, if they get it all going. Well, yeah, it's gonna be there whether it's done or not, but that'll be there. They're in the process of being, having it lettered. What else? They're gonna letter it and they have to do the floor. They're gonna paint the floor so that it's only plaid, plywood. Not plywood, but it's a type of wood. So we're gonna paint that. Other than that, I'd like to thank bars for their generosity. You know, it's another nice piece of equipment.
That's one of their in lieu of contributions.
Whatever you want to call it. But it's, 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 it'll be real helpful for us.
Great.
And then the other thing is, I know there's something going on with the pad or.
Yes.
It's gotta sit on a pad before.
We started talking about making a pad for the trailer and the boat there, so.
So other than that, we're good. We only had one brush fire and.
It was two.
Same place twice.
Just one weekend of brush fire.
It was just one. It was second, second call. It wasn't a, it wasn't a, what do you call, somebody thought the tractor was on fire and it was just the way it was positioned and the smoke was behind the tractor and they thought the tractor was on fire. No, that was, I'll take care of it. First one, it got windy, the flame jumped and then we did have a.
Where was the brush?
Where was it? Claw pots, crushing claw pots, Donnie's tickles, where they're clearing out in there.
Where they're doing a lubbering.
Yeah, where they're doing for the cattle and stuff in it. So he had it pretty well contained when he was doing it, but. But other than that.
Mr. Ross?
Okay. The Bard Shuttle, I watched it multiple times blow through the stop sign on the corner. And out of all the people that drive in and out of this, that's going the fastest, big time.
At the four corners?
Yeah, I watched it Sunday. Last night I was down there. I think the night, just blow right through that, not even just looking, there's nothing coming, doesn't even stop. Loop bus stops, absolutely. I specifically, and it's flying.
I would speak to it and I would also speak to the deputies because it's just another vehicle and if it runs a stop sign, they get ticketed for speeds. Thank you for bringing all that attention.
Not the loop. They seem to be, you know, different standard there, but.
I'm sure it's an individual driver.
I, I don't, I don't know.
They're gonna hear about it tomorrow, so.
Yeah.
Thank you, Pete.
Lot of little kids running around still, not paying attention.
Absolutely. Any other comments from the floor, from the Board of Trustees? Well, thank you all. At this time, is there a motion to adjourn?
I move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Should we have a discussion or all in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, seven fifty-nine, we're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.